Basically, everyone, and I'd like to thank you all for being here. Because I've been here six years, and I had this so much. Anyway, I can't thank you, I can't thank you all enough for being here tonight. We're all friends of the fair, we're all community members. You all love the fair just as much as we do. How many of you have ever been to the fair? Raise your hand. Who's going to be in the podcast, anybody up here? Okay, well, obviously, we have speakers for the evening, for the evening. And what I'd like to do first, as I said, is to thank you all for taking your time to come out. We will be live streaming, so if you ask a question later in the program, I'll come over and give you the mic. Be sure to smile at that. Aside from that, we are here tonight, as I said, as citizens, not as board members, but people that are concerned about the takeover from the state of our fairgrounds. I'd like to start out by introducing Sarah from Roshi Alba. Sarah, where are you? Okay, and if you don't know Sarah, you need to go with Roshi Alba. Okay, big supporters of the fair, Sarah.
Thank you, Joanna, thank you for that great endorsement for her business. Anyway, guys, thank you all for coming. This is Trish, we're representatives of, representatives of the Friends of the Fair. And we want to, first off, thank you all for being here. We find it very important to, we know there's a lot of questions going around. We want to really take some time and let you get your questions answered. A little about the Friends of the Fair. Our sole mission, for any of you who may not be aware, is to, is to raise funds and support the Tri-County Fairgrounds. That is all we do. Every, every activity or event that you see us put on is in order to facilitate supporting the fairgrounds. So when we were asked if we could sponsor this or facilitate maybe this open conversation, we felt it was within our mission because everybody's question's being answered. It's going to help the fairgrounds be successful. Nothing can be successful if there are questions or concerns or conspiracies or whatever you want to say. So we're all here to have our questions answered, and we all have questions. And hopefully, we all walk out of here feeling a little better informed and more comfortable in the situation than I know we all have questions about. So for those of you who have volunteered at our events over the last, gosh, how many years, so many years, Trish?
Yeah.
Thank you. And for those of you who have come to the markets and concerts and the things that the Friends of the Fair, the events that we put on, thank you for that. We are going to continue to do those things. We have never wavered in our, in our support of the Tri-County Fairgrounds. And we will continue to support that fairgrounds as long as we are in game existence. So thank you for your time today. Please ask your questions. There is no super question. These guys are here to, to give you as much information as, as they can. And Trish and I are going to sit down and let this shindig begin. Yep, Judy? Or back to Joanne. Or I'm going to give this back to Joanne, perhaps, and she's going to air a moment. Thank you, Joanna.
Okay, thank you. Nice job again. And again, the Friends of the Fair, I know Sarah said this, but it's our nonprofit. And the nonprofit is to spend money back at the fairgrounds for their needs. So tonight, we're going to have just two citizens that represent the fair speak tonight. And what I'd like to do is, I'm sure you're going to have questions. Let us go ahead and talk about the bullet points that we have. And then we'll go around later and answer your questions. That sound good? Quite good with that? Okay, thank you. Does your microphone work?
Can you hear me? Okay. I too want to thank everyone for being here. It's so nice that all of you are concerned about what is going on with our fairgrounds. So thank you all for coming. And what I would like to do is just kind of give a background of what has happened to our fairgrounds, starting in May of 2023. So there are two issues to discuss tonight that relate to each other. And one is the audit, and the other is Jen Maguire being co-CEOs with Bishop and Ventura County Fair. So the last audit that we had was in 2009. That's 15 years ago. And as most of you know, we've had two embezzlements since then. And you would have thought that if we had embezzlements, that CDFA, which is the California Department of Food and Ag, would come to the fairgrounds and do an audit. But they did not. So we hired Jen in December of 2018. And again, because she was a new CEO, we would have thought that CDFA would have come to the fairgrounds and sat down with her and go through policies and procedures, what a CEO should be doing. And they did not. So, starting back in May of 2023, the auditor's office contacted Jen and said they were coming to do an audit. And we were excited about that because, like I said, it's been 15 years. We want to see what we're doing wrong. We want to correct anything because we want to do things right. They said they were coming in May of 2023. Jen says, is it possible for you to come after our fair in the fall? Because, starting in May, we have five big events. We have mule days, we have high school rodeo state finals, we have junior livestock show and auction. And Jen was just appointed to the Ventura County Fairgrounds as their CEO too. And they had their fair for two weeks in August, and then we had our fair at the end of August and the first of September. They said, no, we're coming in May. And they came during mule days, and they also came during high school rodeo state finals. So the auditor, her name is Visha Ray. She interviewed the staff and the volunteers. She requested all kinds of documents, bank statements, credit card statements, receipts, invoices, employee timesheets, anything and everything that has to do with an audit. And they did everything they could to find everything that she had requested. But again, you got to remember, it's during two events on our grounds, and they're trying to be outside, taking care of things, and running in and taking care of the auditors. So during the interviews, and she interviewed the staff and volunteers, and she also interviewed me. She was very unprofessional, she was threatening, she was accusatory, she made everyone uncomfortable, and she asked really inappropriate questions. And my husband, she interviewed him for over an hour, he's a volunteer. And when he came out of that meeting, he said, that was no interview, that was an interrogation. So that just kind of gives you an idea how he felt and how our employees felt. So in December, Jen had emailed the following CDF officials. Michael Flores, Deputy Secretary of Fairs and Expositions. Hyde Magdisarian, who's the chief counsel. Ron Shackelford, who is the chief auditor. Visha Ray, who was the auditor that had come to Bishop, and myself. And she emailed them all because she wanted them to know what was happening at our fairgrounds with the audit, with the person that is conducting the audit. No one replied to her email. So in December, I asked Jen if she was paid the money that we agreed upon with Ventura when she went to work for the Ventura County Fair. And let me back up. In May 18th, in our meeting, we had a Zoom meeting with Michael Flores. And he asked the fair board if we would let Jen co-CEO with Ventura. And we said, she was excited about it because that was her hometown. That was her hometown fair. She grew up with that fair, she worked at that fair. And she said, I know I can help this fair. And we thought, sure you can, because look at what she's done to our fair. She has turned it around from bankruptcy to a million-dollar operation. So we said, okay, Jen, but we had a couple of stipulations that we told Michael Flores. Number one, Jen has to get the top salary of the Ventura CEO because that's a larger fair, and the pay is a lot more than our small fair in Bishop. And that Ventura would pay 75% of the salary, Bishop would pay 25%. We also said that Ventura has to pay 100% of her mileage. One way to Ventura from Bishop is 295 miles, so a round trip is just under 600 miles. So Michael Flores assured us that this would happen. So contracts were drawn up, I signed them, the president in Ventura signed the contract, and all the paperwork was submitted to CalHR, and we just assumed everything was okay. Well, I had asked Jen in December, she'd already worked six months at Ventura. I said, did you get your pay? And she goes, no. And I go, are you kidding me? So I sent an email to Michael Flores, asking him what is going on with Jen's pay. She's been working at both fairgrounds, commuting back and forth for six months, and she has not received the salary upgrade that we, both fairs agreed upon. He never responded to my email. So then in December 21st, I contacted Civil Rights because I said, this is not right, what is going on with our fairgrounds. So I told them all about the audit, what the problems we were having with the audit, and I told them about Jen not getting the pay that she was supposed to get. And I had a Zoom meeting over an hour with a Civil Rights person and the CalHR person. And at that point, I did not file a complaint with them because the Civil Rights person says, well, let me talk to, you know, Flores and Hyde and Ron, and ask them to have Visha removed from our audit and replaced. So he did talk to them, but they didn't listen. They kept her there. So here we are at the audit. Well, before that, everything went sideways with our audit. And I think it was a combination of me contacting Civil Rights because after that, the audit just blew up. And it was like they were looking for anything and everything that they could find to throw up the wall that would stick to put in that audit. So have every, have everyone in here, have you read the audit? Anybody?
Yes.
Yeah, it's terrible. Yeah. So on the cover sheet of the audit, it says that the period is January 1st, 2021, through December 31st, 2022. That's not true. They went all the way back to 2018. And you have to remember, Jen only arrived in December of 2018. So this audit, after we were reading it, it's got half-truths and a lot of lies in it. And yes, there are things in the audit that need to be corrected. And most of those things are procedures and policies that we had no idea even existed because we don't ever get training, the CEO doesn't get trained, the board doesn't get any training. They just put you in there, and because I think where we are located, they just forget about us. So we, we're going through the audit. It is not realistic to the day-to-day operations of the fairgrounds. I don't think the people in Sacramento really know what goes on at a fairgrounds. And that we are not, we are not funded by the state, we are self-sufficient. So any of that money that comes into our fairgrounds, it's because Jen has brought it in there. She is a state employee, but she is not paid by the state. Her salary is what she brings in through the events and the grants that she writes, and that goes to all the employees that are, that work at the fairgrounds.
But, but let me just add to that, that her salary is structured by the state. It's not like the more money she makes in terms of revenue streams, the more money she can be paid. That, that doesn't correlate. When she needs, when it's time for her to get a raise, which we, we have to go through a great lengthy process to apply on her behalf to get her a raise, and it's a step raise, and she's had one, and two percent, and then...
The first one was five. Well, I just assumed when she was a state employee that they would automatically get a raise every year. Well, that's not the case. She went for two years working at our fairgrounds, and I asked her, did you get a step raise? She goes, no. And I go, oh my gosh, you know, we didn't know that. So we had to fill out the paperwork to submit a raise for her. And I mean, it's a lot of forms, it's, all the board members have to fill out an evaluation, we have to compile it, we have to write a letter as to all the wonderful things that she's done and all the money that she's brought in. And then somebody in a cubicle in Sacramento sits there and decides, oh, should we give this person a raise or not? So the first year, she got 5%. The second year, she got 2%. Go figure.
Well, and there's a, if I can just skip to, there is a point in the audit that states that Jen Maguire, that she approved her own raise, authorized her own raise. And Judy, would you tell the folks what, what really happened?
Yes. So in the audit, it states in there that Jen Maguire authorized her little bump in salary that she got. And so Jen didn't authorize that. We were asking around, who did this? Nobody seemed to know. So I contacted CalHR, and I said, who authorized Jen's raise in June? Because the audit said June. CalHR said, nobody did, she didn't get a raise in June. And then she says, but in July, all state employees got a GSI, which is a general salary increase. So CalHR gave Jen that raise. But the problem is, she is a fair CEO, and she's exempt for getting that raise. So they paid her, and it was just a little bump in pay. The auditors knew that she got that pay, so why didn't they come to her during the audit process and say, hey, you got this raise, and you're not supposed to get it? But no, they let her go work the whole year, and then at the end of the audit, they made it set, and they put in there, Jen authorized her pay increase, and that is a lie. And then they want her to pay back that money.
But they're not paying her... But they have never addressed or given us an answer as to why the pay that was contracted was never received by her. The bump in pay was based on the lower level salary that she received being the CEO of our fair, which is a level three. It does not reflect anything with the Ventura fair. And I think all of you can just imagine running two fairgrounds of that magnitude.
Well, and then the other thing is that I contacted CalHR, and I said, who put a hold on Jen's salary? I was told Michael Flores, the person that came to us in May, wanting Jen to do both fairgrounds, put a hold on her salary in June. So he never told Jen that he was putting a hold on the salary. He never told me or any other fair board members, or even Ventura. And Jen's the type of person that she doesn't like to ruffle feathers, so she just kind of went with the flow and didn't even ask, you know, how come I'm not getting the salary that I should be getting?
Maybe I can interject just one thing here, is, you know, we've been living with this story, this fairy tale. Most of you probably are catching just bits and pieces of it, or it's fragmented in some ways. So the question everybody has is, you know, here's Jen, who is, has been appointed to the Western Regional Fair Board. She's, she's renowned throughout the state for, for her work in revenue streams and the things that she's so famous for, the marketing, getting events. People are calling her for advice, and of which she is giving. And so Michael Flores sees her as a good candidate for a concept that he has, and that's for regionalization of fairs. That's where you combine CEOs, take on a couple of fairs, and you, you know, think about this, many fairs, fairgrounds really only have their annual fair. They don't necessarily have the kinds of events that we host. So you ask yourself, well, why would this guy come in and recruit her to do this? I mean, it was based on her reputation, all the things that had gone on, and then hold up her salary and make it seem as if she's a target of some kind. If you follow the timeline, it was the audit that occurred in May, and she went to Ventura in June. It was the audit, the auditor, the attitude, and the getting sideways in a personal way. And we always thought we were more of a professional organization, but that is what prompted, in my opinion, this action where everything turned negative. Because obviously, he didn't put her in Ventura and combine her with Tri-County Fair because he thought she wasn't good at the job. That would have reflected poorly on him. So it's hard to keep track of how this all folds together, but believe me, it does fold together pretty well.
Yeah, we, we believe it's political. Some of the other money things that people have asked me about that were in the audit was like the RV space, where they want Jen and Holly to pay back $83,000. So do you want to do the, go ahead. You tell them about the RV space.
Well, when we go back to the time that we spent, Judy here spent five and a half months in the fair office, acting as CEO with no pay, after we had an unfortunate circumstance with the prior three CEOs actually, and we were without that form of leadership. She, she gave her time. So, you know, we have some idea of what the job entails. And based on that, the fair board, we decided that if we're going to hire a CEO by Polly, we're going to do it right. And we're going to really vet the position, understand exactly, you know, what we want. So we, we were fortunate in finding Doug Lostrum, who is the retired CEO from Orange County, has two huge shares in the state, Orange County and San Diego, they're almost autonomous fairgrounds. And he came up, and we had 17 applicants. He put together a whole process for vetting, you know, applicants, for going through a whole community outreach, what did the community want to see in a CEO. And every instance, Jen, Jen was a shining star. And, but our level of pay, excuse me, the level of pay that we're allowed to pay does not match her, her expertise and her history of employment. So we brainstormed with CDFA employees, the gentleman that is at the fairgrounds right now, who is our resource person, was on board, our...
He was branch chief.
He was branch chief, sorry. Our resource person, Kalea Menthol, was in room, and Doug Lostrum, who has 37 years of fair experience. And we said, what can we do to augment her basic salary so that she feels, you know, that it's worthwhile to come to the fair as a CEO? And so they said, well, you can provide a cell phone, housing, let's see what we can do. Well, you have an... So the RV site, and given the shortage of places to live and the expense, the RV site was a wonderful incentive for, for Jen to come here. And it was wonderful for us because guess what? We have somebody at the fairgrounds 24 hours a day that's guarding against break-ins, homelessness, people with their animals on the fairgrounds, certain liabilities that occur. We thought it was the perfect match. And, and we did it with three state people in the room. And then you give an audit, and it says, well, she has to pay back all that space rent. We were floored. Then Michael Flores says to us in our meeting, he says, well, we sent out an email, or we sent out a notice 18 months ago that fairs could not give free RV sites or whatever. We said, well, who did you send it to? Well, he said, I think it went out in an email. To this day, we can't find it, we've never seen it. And wouldn't you think that our branch chief or our resource person, who knew? And I don't mean they did this in a, those people I'm not saying did this in a wrong way. Don't you think they would say, oh, by the way, you guys have got to figure something else out because the state's decided, we don't even know if that's really true because we can't find it anywhere? That's the kind of thing that blew up into 40-some pages of audit, probably should have taken nine pages. It was not constructive, it was not helpful, it was very hurtful. And the other thing about them RV sites that just irks me to tears is that in the payback, they go clear back when they're moving in in December of 18, charging the rate that would be charged today. That's how they computed what, what was owed. And they, it's, it's beyond disgusting. Anyway, Judy, continue before I poke somebody's eye out.
Well, I did want to mention about the PPP loan because I know that was another big thing that people had asked about. So the PPP loan was a federal loan that came about during COVID. And the first phase, we, the fairgrounds were not allowed to apply for it. The second phase, we were because they didn't have, they still had a lot of money left over, and so they included fairgrounds. But actually, in the first phase, there were a lot of fairgrounds that did apply for it, and they did get the money. So our loan that we asked for was for $59,900, okay? So Jen fills out the form, and on the form it says name and social security number. So she puts her name and social security number, and then they complain about her doing that in the audit. Why did she do that? Well, because it said that on the form, name and social security.
Not only did it say it on the form, there was a letter of instruction from the bank, and it said, in the place that says name, put your own name, put your own social security number, and reference the tax number from the fair, the nonprofit number, or whatever.
And she did. She had the Eastern Sierra Tri-County Fair EIN number on the, on the form as well. So we had all this paperwork, we had, the loan was forgiven, and we got, we got the money. And this was for, this was during COVID, and this was for like hand sanitizers and sanitation stations, masks, all the stuff that we needed during the COVID time. So some of the fairgrounds that we found out, their loans were for $4 million, $3 million, $2 million.
Well, how many did we, how many other fairgrounds did we identify almost instantly that had received these loans that they claim, they being the auditing team, that they claim we applied for fraudulently? How many were there that we discovered right away?
None.
No, I mean the, the other fairgrounds that got the loans, there were what?
Oh, there were, well, we, we just, we stopped at like 29 or something.
Yeah, and the state, it was over 29. We didn't even go through the whole list.
And some of the fairgrounds got, you know, more than one. But in the audit, she puts fraudulent, that Jen was fraudulent in signing or getting this loan. And that's huge.
Judy, I think it's worth telling what she said when she called the bank to find out.
Oh, yes. And we have doc, we have documents that show this, just so you know. We have, that show the direction of how to do this and what Jen was to put on that one. But here's the auditor calling the bank.
She calls the bank, talks to the manager of the bank, and asks him, who, who committed fraud? Was it Jen or was it you? And he says, well, what of, how about number three? Nobody. None of us committed fraud. And we had all the paperwork that we gave to the auditors, they all had all this stuff before. They all had all this stuff before the audit. And just like all these other things that ended up in the audit, we had already taken care of it. It should have never been in the audit.
I think that there is a perspective about audits that most of us don't realize. Most of us... I work with Southern Inyo Hospital, and we get audits by the state all the time. And it's supposed to be corrective action. It's supposed to help you learn and to guide you to a better path of doing business and to improve your procedures. And I think that we have a person in the audience who's just very professional, has a very professional attitude, and is not as emotional as I'm feeling right now about audit. And I wanted to ask Leslie to come up and give you her observation of having read through this audit, just from the perspective of how we maybe should be looking at an audit. Let her sit right here. Thank you, Leslie.
Do you need any introductions? You know Leslie Chapman?
Yes.
She was formerly CFO of both Inyo County and Mono County, CEO or CAO of both counties, well over 30 years in accounting procedures and in that kind of work. And I just want you to listen to her observations and her comments about the audit because it made me feel a lot better.
Good evening, everyone. So I was kind of... Didn't prepare for this, so I'm going to do the best I can, and maybe later if I need to answer questions, I'm happy to do that. So I grew up in Bishop and loved the fair ever since I was young enough to jump over the fence and get in free. And so it means a lot to me. In fact, I can see a couple of people in the audience right now that used to do that with me. So... But I have spent my career, most of my career, in accounting procedures, internal controls. I've been a CPA for about 35 years. I did a lot of outside auditing before I moved back to Bishop and became the Inyo County Auditor Controller for 12 years. When I heard about the... First, I heard about the audit report, and then I picked it up, and I've read it a couple times. And I do have some observations about it. The first observation is, oh, my God, they need to fix a lot of stuff here. And I still hold that opinion with everything I know. There is a lot of stuff that needs to be fixed. There's no getting around that. I also noticed some things in there that were unusual for an audit report. And I don't want to, you know, have a lot of opinions or pass judgments, so... But there were some things that struck me as being unusual in there. And a couple of things I followed up on, you know, just for my own information. And one of them that really struck me was the COVID loans. Because I happened to be the CEO of Inyo County when we extended that grant to the fairgrounds. And it was a $10,000 grant. Everyone got screened by a team. They passed the screening. I was... I had retired by the time it came time for the reporting for the grant. So I picked up the phone. I called Amy Shepherd, who's the current auditor controller, and she pulled her files, and sure enough, all the receipts were there. Everything was accounted for. What the auditor didn't like is that the $10,000 got transferred from the Friends of the Fair into the fairgrounds in a lump sum. And so they wrote them up. But, you know, all of the documentation was there. The county did not consider it a fraudulent loan or inappropriate loan or anything that needed to be paid back. So my main role was to just extend a hand and say, can I help you get into compliance? And then, of course, I opened up this whole bit of information that I was unaware of. And a lot of it's not my area of expertise, but I am supportive, and I have been watching the fairgrounds grow pretty much since Jim Tatum left. It's been, am I allowed to say, shit show? I feel like when Jen stepped in, she really turned things around. And all the money that's in the fairgrounds now is not state money. And it gave me a little bit of PTSD because the state likes to have unfunded mandates. And I had to get over the idea that this really felt like a lot of unfunded mandates. But on the same hand, you've got to have good controls in place. And what we see with a person like Jen is that people are generally very heavily slanted towards operations, and then some are administration and that sort of protocol. That is not her expertise. I've known that about her for a long, long time. Not her expertise. And so while she's done a fabulous job with the fairgrounds, I feel like in a situation where it's been 15 years since the last audit, the very least that this board and this organization deserves is the opportunity to correct. And, you know, while it's going to take some work, and there's a lot of corrections, there's nothing that's overwhelmingly unacceptable. It's easy corrections. Every single policy that was missing got a separate write-up with, you know, three or four additional points underneath it. I feel like that could have been combined in one and probably saved about 10 or 12 pages. Nevertheless, those things need to be corrected. And so, you know, I reached out a hand and, you know, would like to help correct it, but obviously, there's a lot of other things that have to happen first. So they need to have, you know, a CEO in place, and, you know, the board wants to see Jen reinstated. I would support that. But they need an accounting person, too. And there's a lot of other state rules that make it hard to get a consistent, reliable person, you know, full-time accounting and compliance. So there are issues. They're all fixable. I never saw in the audit report that there was any misappropriation of funds. Missing receipts, that's concerning, but, you know, it can be... You can crack down on that and have new rules and different layers of review. I didn't see where anything had been embezzled, that there were any illegal acts. I feel like it just needs to be fixed. And I don't understand, like everyone else, I don't understand why they removed the board's power and unseated the CEO based on what I read. And I think that's all I have to say. That's probably too much.
Now, that's...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I thought that would maybe give some people... I mean, we're close to the issue, and sometimes listening to people that are right at the desk, you know, you think maybe we missed something. I'm sure we missed a few things. Let's talk about the fact that Jen has built all this outstanding, these revenue streams, and really put us back as fair. I mean, you don't get the kind of talent that she's brought to this fair without knowing your business. But then let's see what happens at the fair office when Jen is doing that magical part. Because a lot of the times, Jen was also on the black wheel in the arena, or mowing or helping. So let's talk about why we don't have those other employees in place. It's because at our level of fair, again, the state is very stringent about what we're allowed to hire. There's a big thing about 125...
25.
25-day employees.
Or 1,000 hours.
Or 1,000 hours. So I guess... Now, I assume that most of you have been to the fairgrounds. You probably know that it's not all brand new and shiny, that a lot of the heating and air conditioning units could use a little upgrade, that the sprinkler system, I think we've got some experts on that in the room, so say in the back. And the equipment, a lot of it is very old and, you know, needs a lot of attention. So you can hire 125-day or 1,000-hour employee. They have to know where the valves are, the sprinklers are. What is the catchy little part about making this machine work or this machine going? So what happens when it's day 126? Does that person go home? And then you get a brand-new person that wants some of the fairgrounds and takes that job over? That makes no sense at all, and it won't work at that facility. Because it's accumulated knowledge. Judy's husband was a volunteer, and he could hardly ever go home because he developed enough knowledge about the system and about the procedures that he just became indispensable, and you just had to have him there. And our employees that are there now... So what happens at the end of 125 days? Jen would write a contract and make them a contract employee. I've talked to no less than seven or nine CEOs of fairgrounds since this occurred. And they all say they do the same thing because there's no other way to make it work. And your labor pool is not strong enough to say, okay, okay, City of Bishop or County of Inyo or Mono, come to the fairgrounds tomorrow because I need an employee that knows everything. It's just a very difficult situation to be in. And Leslie talked about the office. Do you realize that in the time of the missing receipts, now that stretched from 2018 to the end of this audit, it actually represented less than 1% of the monies that were in that system at that time, less than 1%? Many of the receipts were there. They were not legible. They were on paper. There was just almost blank on the attachments. But think about this. More than 20 people, either volunteers or part-time employees, had been sitting at that office, in that office, getting those receipts, filing those receipts. Yes, we need to do better. There's no excuse for not having a procedure, but we did have a procedure. It just didn't get carried through. The receipts come in, they go in a container, they get attached, and they get filed. Maybe if we went back in the office today, when it's not in the middle of the old days or the junior auction, and we searched through every box, we'd come up with more receipts. But remember, it's like 1%. I find that the real issue at hand is an inadequate system of how fairs are organized at the state level. And I'm not blaming the state. I mean, we have a lot of things that we could talk about, but let's realize that fairs are really low on the totem pole. A fair appointment... I've been on two fairboards. I was on the Free Trade Fairboard when I lived there, Desert Empire. You know, it's nice if you apply and you get appointed by the governor. That's all really good. But it's pretty interesting that that's the last appointment they make. It's just like the lowest-level appointment in the state. And then they took away all the funding for fairs. They just, one day, get a notice, there's not going to be any more funding coming from the state. So all the money that we now have in our bank account, this is what Leslie was alluding to, that we generated... Jen generated enough revenue to pay her salary to be able to hire some part-time people to upgrade some things and lobby for grants and work... I mean, writing grants and making sure you even realize those opportunities are out there is no small thing. Many people are terrified of the thought that they would have to go out and write a grant or you won't win a grant opportunity. So, yes, we need to do better on those small parts. But to write in somebody's audit fraud, the word fraud, does that mean that if we don't do what they tell us we're going to do, like fire our CEO, that they then can go after her for fraud? Is that why that word is in there? We lobbied the head of CDFA Legal, Hykisarian, and the Deputy Secretary, Michael Flores, throughout this process to just simmer down and let's correct the audit. We had written correction material, all of our responses. And then we were in a closed session, and we got on a phone call with the head of legal of CDFA, and we complained about the auditor. And he went bananas on the phone. And in that room with him was Randy from legal, Michael Flores, and Francis Tony, who's the branch chief who's at the fairgrounds right now. They were all in the room with him. And he had quite a little hissy fit. He said, I'm going... Now, this is us calling him for help. He said, I'm going to end this call right now. Nobody criticizes my auditors. Okay, well, we said, well, okay, who in legal represents us? I do. So they... I had several conversations with him, and he appointed what he said was a gentleman in the office in the legal team that had been walled off and didn't know anything about it. And he came to our meeting. His name was Peter Weber. Peter Weber, nice guy. And when he walked in to our meeting, he had prepared responses to the audit that were very compact and very businesslike, but not our responses. We had written responses. And he said to us, and I think he did this in good faith, he said, this is the format you should use. It's very brief. You let him know that you're going to correct this, that you're going to do that. And he said, that will put this audit in a drawer, and it will go away. He also said, may I interrupt?
Yeah.
He also said that this was one of the least findings of all the fair audit. They... Yeah, he said, I have seen...
Not to worry about.
Yeah, he said, and he's in the CDFA legal. He said, this is, you know, I've seen far worse audits. So we didn't like that because you don't want to agree to something that you feel in your gut is not right. But you also don't want to spend your life in a legal battle with, you know, you would just want to move on. So...
Can I just...
Sure.
And one of the things that he did, he brought... He sent us a form from the auditor's office that had like a question, that they provided a sample question and then an answer, and it was a one sentence. And so that's why he said, you know, you only want to do one or two sentences at the most.
Yeah, so don't think I fault in him. I'm just explaining the process so you know how we got to this microphone today. So we agreed finally, and we submitted the audit. This is pretty interesting, though. It's almost laughable at this point after we shed a few tears over it. But on the form that he gave us to send in, it had two places for signature. One was Jen's signature, and one was Judy's as president of the board. When the final audit came out...
The first paragraph.
The first paragraph criticized Jen for signing her own audit when the instructions and the form clearly called for her name. And I only bring that up because that just shows you how frustrating it is to try to do the right thing. So I called... When we got this final audit and we were asked to meet with Michael Flores and Hykisarian in a board meeting...
June 24.
June 24. I called both of them. I think Judy called both of them. Hykisarian would not talk on the phone without getting Michael Flores on the phone with him. I talked to Peter Weber, and he said, I went to bat for you guys in three or four meetings. And I only know what I said to them on the phone, but I said, if you're coming to Bishop with a noose and a branch, don't come. Because that's how it felt to us. I said, I have a terrible feeling about what you're doing. And I said, the board is not going to fire Jen Huire. So they showed up, and our meeting was at 3:00 in the Alton One conference room. And we get there at 3:00, and we have an open meeting. And we get there at 3:00 and we have an open meeting. Trish is there, Cheryl Underhill is there, Jose is there, just to speak to them on behalf of Jen and the community.
Mike Francisoni.
Mike Francisoni walked in. We did not know he was signing, but that was fine. We, you know, we've been working with him for years. And they don't show up. Hykisarian, head of legal, California Department of Food and Ag, and the Deputy Secretary, Michael Flores, don't show up and we get a message.
Mike got the message.
Mike Francisoni got the message that they were going to be two or two and a half hours late. Well, that was a little irritating, it was JLA week, a lot going on. We always have a meeting on that week so that we're all at the fairgrounds. So when they walk in at 5:15, it was after the credit union was closed to the public. This is very interesting. And they walk in accompanied by two Hykisarian. And the first words out of Mike Flores's mouth was, "Well, what did you think of the audit?" After, I won't say first words because Trish didn't speak, Jose, bail came back for the 5:15 bail. And so we poured our teary-eyed little hearts out for two hours trying to shed some light on this audit. And he asked us to go to, go ahead.
I was just going to say, our person that was supposed to represent us, Peter Weber, I had emailed him two weeks before our meeting and I said, "Are you going to be at our meeting on the 24th?" He says, "I don't know, I'll have to check my schedule, I will get back to you." I emailed him like a week before our meeting and I said, "Are you going to be at our meeting on the 24th?" I never heard back from him.
He was supposed to be, he was our representative.
I emailed him again. I said, "Are you going to be at our meeting on the 24th? You're supposed to represent the board." I never heard back from him. So he never showed up with Michael Flores or Hykisarian.
I did call him the Friday before our meeting on Monday. And he did answer the phone and he said, "I don't think I'm going to be there." And I said, "Well, then I would like to speak to Hykisarian directly." And he said, "I think you should speak to Hykisarian." And we had quite a conversation. So he said, "I will get ahold of Hykisarian and have him set up an appointment with you for today." I said, "Okay." So Hykisarian did text me and he set up the appointment for 2:15. And we did, he got Michael Flores on the phone and we talked. And that's when we had the conversation about we're not going to fire Jen and then the Hykisarian come in and. And so we went into closed session. And never, never did we ever consider firing Jen McGuire. But we did, to appease them, we came out to closed session and said, "Well, we're, you know, we had already corrected a number of things in the audit and responded, they'd seen our long responses, but that's not what went in the file." And so we said, you know, we want to, we went through the whole thing. We want to do things correctly, we will take care of this. And we will put Jen on six months probation, for what we didn't know, but that was our appeasement. He whips, he looks at Hykisarian.
Well, and we also said that we will make all the corrections in the audit. And at the end of the year, we would like someone to come back and do an audit to make sure we have done everything correctly.
Yeah, the code says you get an annual audit, we would like an annual audit. Okay, so he whips, he looks at Hykisarian, motions Hykisarian out of a letter, hands it to Michael Flores, and Michael Flores starts reading, I still don't know what it meant, but it was basically stripping us of any power at the fairgrounds. We could still attend the meeting, blah, blah, blah. And getting rid of Jen. And I said, "Can we go back into session? If you're going to, you know, fire her, can we go back into session and accept her resignation?" And he said, "Do you have a letter of resignation?" I said, "Yes, we do." He said, "Well, I'll accept it right now." That's how the letter of resignation was generated. It was prepared ahead of time. Jen had been in the hospital three times, all stress-related. So then the next day, so they, no explanation to us about what this letter means to our lives, the five of us. And keep in mind, and Joanne is giving me the evil eye here, keep in mind that we had been six months with no forum. Wanda Summers had passed away, we only had four board members, we're supposed to have nine. The appointments office made no appointments. And then magically, right before, you know, as this whole process is getting set up, Sarah Fogerty, who was supposed to be my replacement on the board, is appointed. So now we have a forum, except I can't leave the board because they won't have a forum. We find out that unless we had a forum and could meet, he insisted that all five of us be there when we have a forum. Unless we had a forum, they could not have done the action that they did. So here we think, oh yay, we're getting another board member and we can actually pass our minutes and conduct business. And in reality, it was a setup. So I...
So I just want to say, so after our meeting on the 24th, we find out that Michael Flores sent our audit to like 40-some CEOs in California.
The audit that was going to be in a drawer.
Right. He sent it to like 40-plus CEOs in the state of California, bragging about, "Look what I just did," to Jen McGuire, who is, you know, outstanding in the fair industry. And the thing is, the audit, it is a public record. But in order to get that public record, you have to send a written letter to the legal department in Sacramento and then it will take them like 10 days to send the audit to you. But he did this by email and we found this out.
We also found out that, now this was June 24th, that sometime in January, he had called another CEO of another fair and asked them to be prepared to step in in June or July to help with another fair. And it was us. And this person said, "I couldn't believe it would..." And called him, that person, within like two hours of having left our meeting. So things, this is, this play was written a long time ago. As soon as the auditor got sideways with our fair board and our fair office, this is, this, I don't know how you guys would operationally define this action. I just think it's a bad word. Joanne? We probably overloaded you and we apologize. You might have other questions.
Does anyone have any questions?
What we thought we could do at this point, I think we need to give these two ladies a hand because, hey, you're right. I'm giving you a hand for sitting here for an hour. We did talk about how we were going to disseminate this information. It's very personal, it's been very harmful. We've gotten, I hate to give the people out there that are namesayers, or probably some here in the audience, but we've received horrible, horrible emails. They're threatening, they're psychically orientated, they're disgusting. And there are people that probably don't, some do, but some people don't live here. If you get, if you put anything positive out about Jen at the fairgrounds and you get something negative, we would sure like you to let us know. Because we're compiling those and we will give them to a ten-person and eventually find out who these people are. They're very intimidating and they're ugly. So just be prepared, I want you to know that. One of the things you do have on your table, Judy prepared this for us, this is Karen Ross and this is Senator Alaros Gil. I did call their office, in fact, that was them calling me to see how this was going. They did ask that anyone that was interested, you can email to both of these two people. They, you don't have to write a letter in person, you can just write a letter on your cell phones and send it in. And that's how they told me that's what you had done. They all, the ladies also mentioned that there is an investigation happening now with civil rights. But besides keeping our fairgrounds here and under our control and not the state, it's important that you do take the time to send some letters. In the end, what we would like to see is non-state takeover. I mean, the way Jackie presented it, the letter that Flores read to us, eliminated Jen and eliminated the board. Flores said that he thought it was time, he would come down with his team and that means CEO, that means board, and they will decide when there's board meetings and what will be done. My concern about that almost over $600,000 that we now have in the bank that Jen has raised, she raised that money to bring entertainment here, we grew concerts, fix up the fairgrounds. The state could do anything they want to with that money because they don't live here, they don't know what we need, they don't know what we want. Have I missed anything that we didn't talk about?
I think it's good for everyone to know that before we hired Jen as a board, we had a lot of conversations about a new direction for fairs in California. And that is to become independent nonprofits or joint powers agreements with counties or cities or other entities and keep our money local and keep our fair moving in that direction. The state of California does a lot of great things, I'm sure. But they, in my opinion, have failed us as a fair. They don't follow their own rules. They provide, you know, I've been, as I said, on two fair boards and there's no manual. There might be one in existence, but Sarah, who was disappointed, got nothing. None of us have ever seen any of that. We are trained on badly keen, sexual harassment and one of my trainings was phishing on the internet. But nothing and Jen has received nothing. And keep in mind that she was criticized by Michael Flores for, "You're a professional CEO." Well, her first year, she received, she received no training, then she had COVID. She has, she has had only maybe one solid year where she could actually be, as she would operationally define, a working CEO that does what a CEO does at a fair. So it's a lot for you to take in. We are talking, we have talked to the county, we have talked to the city. We are talking to everybody. We try to stay silent and say nothing, say absolutely nothing. But you know, when you start reading opinions coming in that are uninformed, you realize that there's a good portion of the public who needs straight information. We have reams of paper, it's an open book. Not being personal to anybody at any level, but it's time to own our own fairgrounds. I mean, if that means the state stays in and we have local people running it, it doesn't have to be the same board, it could be, there's lots of applications in there. They just haven't applied. Another thing is that we're tri-county. Do you ever see a fair board member from Alpine? That tells you how antiquated the system and that has to change legislatively. They have assigned this fair to Alpine County, Mono County, and Ennio County. They allow two board members, there's nine board members, two from Alpine, two from Mono, five from Ennio, just because of the population configuration. It does not work, folks. We're living proof that if it ain't broke, don't fix it, but this one's broke. I implore you to at least stay positive in your attitude to someone like Jen McGuire who has worked so hard for all of us. And I appreciate your time, Jen.
I would like to say one thing. So like the future of the fairgrounds, right now, I think probably everyone knows, Mike Francisoni, who's the branch chief of CDFA, he is the interim CEO. And when I asked Michael Flores in our meeting, I said, "Who's going to run the fairgrounds?" And he said, "Don't you worry about it, I have a team in place." Well, he has Mike and that's it.
And Mike has another job.
Yeah, Mike has another job. I talked to him and he said, "Well, I'll probably be here through the weekend." Well, last time I talked to him, he says, "I think I'm going to be here through October" because Jen had already planned on having a concert in October. So he's going to be here for a long time. But because we made complaints to civil rights, CDFA Civil Rights, and I talk to these people in civil rights a lot, they referred, they recused themselves and they are not going to handle any investigations. So now they are opening the investigation for outside investigator and it could take like six months, they said. So who knows what's going to happen in October after Mike Francisoni leaves? You know, we don't know if the doors are going to be closed at the fairgrounds or if they're going to put someone else in there or what. So, and apparently Karen Ross had said that CDFA needs to hold off on appointing a new CEO and a new fair board until after the investigation. So we're kind of all in limbo here. So we just want everyone to know exactly what is going on because at this point, we really don't know what's going on.
Sarah wanted to say something, yeah?
I just wanted to kind of roll back.
I just, thank you, I just wanted to kind of roll back a little bit back to the, here, Mike, interim CEO. And here, as you know, Sarah, owner of the worst rally, with the generous, other boss of the worst rally. In my, in my role as being affiliated with Friends of Care, I just want to let everybody know, he's doing, he's doing the best, he's doing a really great job as far as interacting with Friends of Care, taking care of the businesses going on at the fair. He's, I know people worry about that because we hear all these things that are going on. Mike is doing, he's doing a magnificent job. He's not here from there, for sure, he does, he has another job to get back to.
Yeah, and he's...
But he's really trying to, with Mike Ford, I feel, and is very supportive of Friends of Care.
And he's in a tough spot, he's in a very tough spot.
I think right now what we'd like to do, we have about 20 minutes left. Your seats, still handle sitting in your seats. I would like to entertain any questions you might have pertaining to what we've talked about. The one thing I'm not going to do is, we're not going to argue with anyone. We, I won't accept any negative things. If you have something to say that's negative, please write it down. We'll look at it and we'll give the answer to you.
You have someone back there that has a question.
Thank you, I'll be back.
Hi, I was just wondering if there's a possibility you could post the audit to the internet or the website?
All you have to do is ask for it. We can do that, we can all ask.
Well, the audit is posted on Facebook. It's posted on Facebook, Eastern Sierra now has it, I think. A lot of people have posted it on Facebook.
I'm sure. Was there any other questions besides...
Just one quick one. So I...
This is Leslie, I want you, Leslie, she's got a lot of questions.
I don't need one. So what I want to know is the state pays absolutely no money to the fairgrounds? Not even a penny? Zero? Okay, thank you.
In the old days, they used to get about $200,000 when Jen was there. And in those days, we just had a fair, we had a livestock show, and we had the old days.
So I will say that there is pending legislation that Western Fairs Association, I believe, may have something to do with writing that is proposing some income to the fairs. And that is something new and it's, well, I mean, they used two years ago and then they took it away. So, but there is pending legislation and I wish I had a number for you to look up. I'm sorry, I don't.
But that money, that money is generated from all the fairgrounds. It's the tax money, when a vendor sells something on the fairgrounds, that tax money goes into a certain...
Yes, that's where this money is coming from.
Container or it goes into a certain place...
The GIO.
Where it's supposed to go back to the fairgrounds. And so they passed this like, I don't know, five years ago. And none of the fairs have ever gotten the money because they cannot figure out how to distribute this money that they're probably spending in Sacramento. So that's, they're supposed to... So that's, they're supposed to give back the money that the fairgrounds has earned through taxable sales.
And we have one other thing that the state has taken over that they're not doing such a hot job on. And Jackie would have said.
Well, it's, you know, we just had a livestock show, an auction. And so Brenda Lacy, who is the Lone Pine FFA leader and works with Mary Simpson at the County Office of Education and Joe Buckington at Bishop, was, had a question today. And she went in and talked to Mike Francesconi. And he tried to help her. But her, this is a perspective that I think hits so many families in the area. So her question was, what is the date for next year's livestock auction or show? And why is that so important? And why is it imperative that it be answered right now? Well, it's because Brenda, as an example, is getting ready to put in an order for steer. As soon as school starts and she starts her MFA kids, they will, one of their first things is they will select the animal, if they're going to raise an animal for market or whatever, they'll select that species early in the year. And she orders the steer. Most of the steers she gets comes from Fresno, Fresno State. And they raise steer for FFA kids to then take on at a certain age. So when you take a steer to market, it has to be a certain age and weight. And so everything in an MFA program backs up to the day on calendar that that auction is going to occur. And that hasn't been set. And nobody knows what to do about it or when it will be set. I'm sure Mike, as a conversation today, is probably frantically working on that. But if you understand how it impacts the school systems, she's asking Barry in the Office of Ed and both of the school districts, Lone Pine and Bishop, who have those programs, to get involved in writing letters because you can't have a student take out a loan for a steer and then have the date of the auction pass the date where that steer meets the weight or meets the age of being in that auction. And I didn't say steer, but it's the same with sheep, hogs, all of them. So that was something that hadn't been on my radar. She just called me today on Pam, and she said, "Somebody's got to set a date." I said, "Well, I'm afraid it's not going to be us." But little example of the far-reaching, you know, impact of these decisions from Sacramento.
Thank you, Jackie. Karina would like to share something. Karina?
Hi, I'm Karina Worfy. And I have the honor to work with these wonderful ladies and me on the board as well. And I've also had the privilege of being able to endure what we've just endured for the past year. But I wanted to talk about the fact that this has also happened to a couple of the fairgrounds in California. The exact same process, and they've handled the exact core way. I have formed a coalition with these other fairgrounds. Several of them are afraid to come forward because they're afraid of retaliation from the state. They're afraid of what may happen to them because of their fighting machine. But I'm gathering all the information to also submit to the people that in various government positions, to tell their story as well because they're afraid. Many of them literally said when they came in, were taken out of the boards, when their boards were fired, and their CEO, they just walked away because everybody, they didn't want to say anything. They're sharing their stories with me, and I'm compiling all of that. So it's not just Bishop. There's something bigger going on that we don't know about. And we're not going to talk about this.
My personal feeling, and I'm probably headed for what they call three hots and a cot.
I'll send you cookies.
With a razor on. So if you look at CDFA, which I'm sure needed attention and some energy brought in, we've mentioned two gentlemen. And this is not personal in terms, I don't know them well enough to know whether I like them or not. I don't care if this is about our fairgrounds. But Hyke Serian was appointed by the governor to the California Department of Food and Agriculture in 2021. So was Michael Flores. Michael Flores was a political consultant, according to the biography printed by CDFA. He was political consultant in 2019, was appointed, he served on fishing game commission. He was appointed to the police commission and then was appointed to CDFA. They both told me that when they were appointed, the reason that the fairgrounds did not have audits every year, which would have helped, was because there was only one full-time auditor in CDFA. So the excuse that they didn't have, that things went wrong because they didn't have the proper number of employees, they can say that. But when we try to explain that we aren't allowed to hire anybody on a full-time basis, and we don't have somebody sitting, the same person sitting at that desk every day, day after day, they tell me that that is no excuse for what happened. So you have these two fellows being appointed. I don't know if they're good, bad, or indifferent. But if you have political appointments, this is the pattern I see. Agree with me or not, or vet it. I'd like to see it vetted. But if you've got an appointment here, an appointment here, an appointment here, in each case, you look at your department and you decide what is needed? How do I make a difference? Because obviously, there's another appointment down the road. And so audits became, I think, I have no science behind this. I don't pretend to. Audits started happening. They hired auditors. So my question was, well, what kind of training does their auditor? I don't know the answer. What, how do they decide that this auditor is able to do this audit? But then also, what's the end game? Who benefits? Does somebody go and say, "Well, I cleaned up the fair industry now. I'm ready for my next appointment"? Is that, could that possibly be what's happening here? So you had Sacramento, you had Santa Cruz, you had.
Big Fresno.
Big Fresno Fair.
Chico.
And Chico. And then you had Bishop. Those five fairs, this is the pattern. Why? What's the, is it possible that the state of California should no longer be in the fair business? Maybe that's where we need to go. Somebody back there has a question.
I have a question. Who owns the property that the fairgrounds own? Is DWP?
It's DWP.
And there's a lease with the state for the fairgrounds? Is that not that works right now?
It's a lease with the fairgrounds. We pay the lease, not the state. The state does not pay anything. The fairgrounds pays the lease.
How hard is it for you to do what you're talking about if you're kind of in the middle of the state?
I'm assuming the answer to that. I don't know how hard it's going to be. I just know that it's. I think it would benefit the state. I honestly feel that the California Department of Food and Agriculture would benefit from not dealing with fairgrounds. I mean, it doesn't make sense.
Kind of just to piggyback off of your comment or question, are there any other fairgrounds in the state that are not run by the state? Is this like groundbreaking what you guys are talking about?
No, Lancaster.
Antelope Valley. Antelope Valley pulled away from the state.
Yeah, this, so Doug Lobstrom from Orange County, who's retired, who I mentioned helped us hire Jen. He cited various examples where this is becoming, you know, a more reasonable approach to communities being in charge of their own facilities and not having to, procedurally, not having to adhere to rules they don't know exist.
Well, it sounds like, and again, you know, I'm just, I don't.
And it needs to be explored, and it may go nowhere.
It's just like, it might be in a unique position considering that a third party was going in.
Right.
So the, and the more of the fairgrounds.
Well, and there are county fairs too that are not DAAs like us.
Yeah.
So it's definitely, if this is something the community wanted, would it be going about it? What, how will the process be? Are you aware? And I don't know if you can answer that. I don't expect you to be able to answer.
Well, there are examples. There's, are good examples of exactly how to do it. Our, with the entities in our county and a city, one incorporated city, we'd have to explore all of that. But it's not impossible. Jan?
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Several things, please. Senator Alana Gilkin introduced the legislation you're talking about. You can be in touch with her office. I sent her a message when I read it and thankful for what she was trying to do. That's where the legislation is. More importantly, I'm assuming there's other vendors here who rule. Not just the scale of animals here for now, but vendors rely upon the activities at the fairgrounds for a good portion of our club income. I'm not, I also have to speak the vicious lines, but you know about our book out there. So we need to know if it's going to be open in the coming day. So my question is, how do we contact the people you're talking about? Do you want us to contact the governor's office? Do you want us to contact Alana Gilkin? Do you want us to reach deeper to other people that have influence? And do you start a movement now to buy out the water power lease out there? Because supposedly, as you know, there's a policy that commercial owners and leases, after two years of tenancy, can buy out their property. Now, it's a very slow moving activity. You probably don't want to. But that's a way for the board to go, assuming you're a suitable board or remaining as a board or so on.
We have no idea. After blabbing tonight, the governor will be willing. I will say that the city of Los Angeles can sell property to another public agency for the appraised value, for public good. So if, I'll just cite the Museum of Western Film History in Lone Pine. When we were looking for a site, we found the piece where that museum is. And we approached DWP, and that's how they said it could happen. We paid for an appraisal. They handled the appraisal. And then we raised, we being the community of Lone Pine, raised the money for the appraised value of the property. We gifted the money to the county as a public agency. And the county orchestrated the purchase of the land from DWP. So there, things can happen to answer the questions that are out there. We have not explored all the ins and outs or, I mean, every phrase we use probably has some operational definition, like, is it a, you know, a joint powers agreement like Lancaster did? And Lancaster facilitated that, and they're very happy with their arrangement. And I don't mean this as a punitive concept. To me, the state would be far better off if they weren't worried about the Bishop Fair, the Hemet Fair, the Paris Valley Fair, and that we have local control. I almost hate to say it because if we approach them, they're going to think we're getting to them. And that's not really the issue. This has been talked about by this board for way back, probably 2017, '18. But then COVID hit, and we did nothing with the concept. So anyway, other questions? Sarah?
Is Jen willing to come back?
She wants to come back.
Yes.
This was her dream. This was her dream to be here.
You know, she told me that working at the Tri-County Fairgrounds is not a job. It's her life. And she has made so many friends here. She didn't know anybody when she came here. She's made so many friends and acquaintances and not only just in Inyo County, but Mono County, all over. And she wants to make her home here, and she wants to come back. And I just want to say that this audit, it has devastated everyone involved with our fairgrounds. Jen has suffered tremendous harassment, retaliation, slander, and defamation of character, not only here, but in her hometown of Fillmore and Ventura. She has been hospitalized several times because of the stress that she's going through. And she does not deserve what has happened to her. And neither does the fair board here or everyone here in this community. Because we all love our fairgrounds. And we are not, we were not on the board for political reasons. We are on the board because we love our communities. We love our fairgrounds. We want to do whatever we can to bring in people from the outside areas to spend their money here with the merchants. And now we're just kind of stuck because we're in limbo.
We just have confirmed another three years with the California State Rodeo Finals, the high school rodeo finals. And immediately upon this action, they've expressed concern about following through on the contract because they don't know who they'll be dealing with. Now, certainly, there's never a guarantee who you're going to be dealing with the following June. But it's an example of how the reverberation of the negativity is hitting beyond our community. So.
And I just want to say that the fair board, we stand 100% behind Jen. And we want her back. And we are fighting to get her back.
And we are the only fairgrounds. We are the only fairgrounds. Excuse me, walk me back. I'm going to walk back to.
Karina's going to fix them.
That's right.
While you walk back.
And ask Nancy.
I just, I have one thing I wanted to say too, real quick. Karina was talking about to the other fair people that were fired or retired or were forced to resign. And I was at a meeting in Ventura when Michael Flores and Hyke first went to Ventura during a Zoom meeting. I went with Jen to this meeting because they were going into closed session to talk to Ventura about our CEO and our audit before they even talked to us. They would not let me in the closed session meeting. And one of the board members in Ventura did not like what she heard. She, I don't know what she said, but she was asked to leave the closed session meeting. And at the end of the open session meetings, the president always asks the directors to all make comments. And her comment was, "You know, I was planning on retiring, but after today, I'm going to stick it out and see where this goes." Well, guess what? She was let go. The state fired her because she stood up against the bully of Sacramento.
Okay, and it's almost 7:30. You have been a tremendous audience. Thank you very much.
Does anybody have anything else?
I'm going to go back and get Lynette. And then we're going to, you know, one or two. We will stay afterwards. And if who's on our ask, okay, question, we're going to be answering mine. But.
Oh, that would be.
Sorry.
He didn't want to be here until the third.
Ask me fast.
Took her on the way back. Just go.
Well, I have not had any negative experience with Jen. I think she does seem to, she's got the Midas touch for a lot of things. How would the committee, I mean, it kind of a lot of ugly stuff. But can we just send an email to the fairgrounds, a letter of support for her and encouragement that you will forward on to her to tell her how much you love her and how much you miss her, how much you want her to come back and that's wanting to be part of our community? How would we get that communication to her?
You can send it to Judy.
You can send it to me, Lynette.
Well, we need to get that, we need to get that out.
We can, we can do a public.
Yeah, the email that I know goes to the fairgrounds is info.
Info at Tri-County Fair.
Yeah. It's for the Tri-County Fair. But I don't know who it is. Yeah, I wouldn't do that. I might recommend you send it to Judy Waggy. You want to share your email?
My email is judywaggy, J-U-D-Y-W-A-G-G-Y, at AOL.com. And I am happy to take any emails, any correspondence that you have and forward it on to Jen.
I was going to give you mine. I had mines for such a long time. It's Joanne. You know, that was easy for me to remember. And then Bishop. And that's how long I've had this. That's when I did the television show for West Star, Gable TV. And of course, they. And of course, AOL. And my son says, Mom, you might be, you might have-
You might be old, what he said. Um, I think Sarah had a comment. Sarah, did you have a-
I just, I just wanted to say a quick thing. I know we're about to get out of here, but kind of back to the Friends of Fair. And I know it can be very frustrating, and it is very frustrating as a community, to see all of this that's going on with the Fair Board and the fairgrounds. But we, please remember that fairgrounds is not the state of California. And please remember that we all support the fairgrounds, and we should continue to support the fairgrounds. And it's kind of going on my Friends of Fair hat. I ask you, please, continue to support the Friends of Fair because we support the Tri-County Fairgrounds. And continue to voice your, your concerns and voice, you know, your opinions and be heard, because this is vital. The fairgrounds is vital to our community. And that's where we evacuate. It's where we have anniversaries, it's where we have birthdays parties. We get married, we have our celebrations of life. It's where we gather as a community. So, and we, please, I ask maybe you guys, please continue to support our little Tri-County Fairgrounds. And remember that the problems that we're hearing about here, the shows are going about here, is the problems with the state and maybe how the state is running this. But I just really want to make sure that we're all celebrating the fairgrounds and the rest of it.
They're, they're- They will accept volunteer hours and cash.
So that was, that's just my concern. I just want to really make sure that-
And the same with the old days. And the old days, as you're seeing, that's a going concern.
It's not a perfect example. The old days, again, it happens.
Right, and they're, they deserve all of our support.
Exactly.
All right, what we decided to do, Jonathan's voice, I just looked at it, it's really long. We're just going to go ahead and thank you so much for being here tonight. And we will hang around and answer any other questions.
The fair itself, which is coming up, was organized by Jen. It's all in place, and Sam's to be with fair. And the Ventura fair that she organized, in their first day of ticket sales, went over a million dollars for the first time in their history.
Jen did that.
And that's, that's her doing.
And everything you're going to see at the fair coming up is Jen's doing, her contracts. There's surprises coming. There's, she got the tunnels to towers. They're going to be here because Jen did it.
Oh, way to go.
They need, they have the time to know this.
That's Jen's doing.
It's Jen's doing.
Well, you can see that we're a little hyped up. Judy got so excited. She said this room was hotter than a pot roast. I really haven't heard that. She must be wrong.
One of my, one of my subwell pages.
And we're even going to have one of those shows that, you know, those things that fly around in the air? Drones? We're going to drone show.
Jen's doing.
And then Jen has put on. So, you know, the fair will go on. And I don't want anybody to say, oh, it went on, we didn't really need Jen. We really didn't need her because everything's in place. The contracts are signed, it's all done. Anyway.
That lady has a question.
Oh, right here, there's a question.
One with her.
I'm sorry.
And then we're quitting. No, no, two. But I was wondering about something you said about the state was saying, some people in the state said they just sign these things in like one or two sentences.
Right.
Yes. Because I know there are places that they need stuff super brief, and there's certain things that they follow. What would happen if you did that, and then they stuck it in the drawer, and they left you alone, and then you could pursue what you want to pursue with the fair, getting it suffered from the state? Would it be a simpler path?
We did that. That's exactly what we did.
Yeah.
That is exactly what we did. And I'm not kidding. They really did literally threaten us when we were in closed session and said, you think this is bad? You'd do anything. Do you just wait? So.
They made several threats to us.
They did. And we joked about this. We smiled at us on the board with three of us that are over 65. And-
Not me, not me.
Anyway, when they showed up, I think they originally wanted three highway patrolmen, because there are three of us over 65. Anyway, but they could only, they only had two. But I can tell you, living in this small town and knowing all of you as friends, and I've seen you in this regional market, for us to walk out where we're waiting for this break for these two guys to get here, there's two highway patrolmen. I'm thinking, well, it's a little late for them to be depositing money. I'm wondering what I'm doing. These two guys requested bodyguards for themselves to come up against-
Us.
Us. I just want to put that, I mean, he should have been afraid. But because, well, and we were so naive. We had no idea what was going to happen.
No, I, when I opened the door to my branch and welcomed them in, and welcomed them in, I said, yes, I said, hi, what are you guys doing there? Because it was two CHP officers. And they said, oh, it's just standard. They requested us to come and join them for this meeting. Still, I mean, I was literally that naive about it because I know, I told Jen all along, I'm like, your history speaks for itself. Nothing bad is going to happen. We've got you. Everything's fine, everything's fine. I told the officers, have a seat in my lobby. Can I get your coffee? Can I get your water? I was so naive. I had snacks for everyone, and my ranch, for people, for everyone. The cops, the, the state people, and this happened. It was, that's how much blindsided this all was.
All right, give yourselves a hand and thank you. We'll, we'll stay.